Welcome to the Wednesday, June 20th.
Not a good choice.
Board of Education meeting. The meeting was called to order at 5:30. We met from 5:30 to 6:30 to evaluate the board's performance over the year. And we met in executive session from 6:30 to 7:00 to discuss some legal matters. At this time, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave Hurst.
Michael Cooper.
Meredith Mearney.
Charmaine Wiedersinger.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lundhart.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Keel.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 6, 2018 Board of Education meeting?
Sub moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do we have anybody from the Student Senate here this evening? I didn't. So, now for the superintendent report.
Okay. So, we were able to have some students here this evening. So, the students in the blue are from Hammagill. They're Odyssey of the Mine team who went to Worlds. So, I asked if they could come and be recognized by the board. And Ms. Kim Kaufman is the coach, I understand. So, I don't know if you just want to share a little bit about what the actual activities that they did, the Worlds, and a little bit about that, so the board has an understanding of what the students did. And I'll first, let me, if I can call the students up, and we'll have them all come up and stand up here to be recognized. So, our fifth grade team was comprised of Kathleen Connolly, Kate Dellenbaugh, Ela Jerabek, Emmett Kaufman, Jonah Kopplick, and Anderson Lee. So, are all of you here this evening? Okay. So, why don't you come on up here? Stand right in the front. Right up here.
Eagle pins.
I didn't know what she was doing.
Oh, no. Oh, she's talking. Then you don't want to be in the picture.
Okay. So, this was a, we were a first-year Odyssey of the Mine team. And their particular problem involved building a vehicle that had to complete certain challenges. And then they also had to do it with a story and some charm, which they all have plenty of. And they came up with a great, was it medieval-themed competition? It was called Triathlon Travels, where they had to joust and perform a track event and also a curling type of event, but with an Odyssey twist. So, their curling ball was a duck on wheels, and you have to kind of see the whole thing. You can get an idea from their costumes up there that it wasn't your average Olympic event. But, so they competed first in regionals and got a lottery slot to go on to state. They came in second place there, so they were able to go on to New York State competition, where they came in sixth, but got a very special Renatra Fusca Award that is given when teams show some sort of above and beyond creativity. And they got it for all of their props and the way they not only completed their problems, mission, but did it with such a bunch of extra, extras. So, that, what their reward for that, getting that award, let them go to the world finals competition in Iowa, which was a big deal. It was four days at Iowa State University. They represented themselves in the district very well. They came in 10th place out of 54 teams competing in their division and problem. There was five different problems in Odyssey. So, they were problem one, and division one is elementary. And they, they got all their, they hit all their marks, they did a great job, and they had a great time. So, we thank you for helping them get there. And...
So, if you haven't ever seen Odyssey of the Mine in action, I remember the first time I saw it, watch it.
It's confusing.
And then after you watch it for a little bit, you kind of understand. But, and I understand they had, was Singapore their...
They had a buddy team.
Buddy teams, right?
Yep. They do a nice thing at finals, where they match them with a team from another country.
So, it's a great experience for the kids. And I know that yourself, and I see many other parents here, it's a huge parent commitment. So, thank you for all your time in helping the students get to something like that. It's really a great experience. So, so, students, we're going to have you come on. We're here because we have a little something for you, so shake your hand. Then we're going to probably hold, we have pins for you. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stand up. You know, for giving them a photo. Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations. It's a lot of hard work. What did you end up giving your Singapore cows? Do you have to, do I have to give them or something? What did you give them?
I gave them like sunglasses.
Sunglasses?
Gum?
They gave them gum and sunglasses.
I'm from Albany, New York. Like, magnet.
Come back here. Get a little photo.
Thank you.
You can come up. Man. You can come up. You can come up. A little bit, so we can read by the television. There you go. Congratulations.
I also have another recognition that I'd like to make this evening, and that is for Mr. Chad Rice, School Resource Officer. Chad is here, I think, with his family, right? And I see several of the Bethlehem police here this evening. We're very safe. But Chad has been with the district as an SRO for how many years now, Chad?
Twelve.
Twelve years, yeah. So, as long as I can remember. And Chad has just been a great resource to the district. He has great relationships with kids, and he's moved to another division in the Police Department, so he's no longer going to be with the school district. And after the number of years he's worked with us and helped support our programs and students, I really felt it was important to recognize him this evening. I know Mr. Domell wanted to just say a couple of words about Chad. So, make Chad come up to the front.
Thank you. And Lynn and Charmaine, thank you, sincere thank you for all your service. Thank you. So, I am thankful to have an opportunity to honor and acknowledge Detective Chad Rice and his service to the Bethlehem Central School District. We are very lucky and blessed to have such a great working relationship with our local police department. When talking to administrators in other districts, I can assure you, our partnership is unique. My number-one priority as a building principal is the safety of everyone in the building. Having a dedicated School Resource Officer is a tremendous benefit. The advantage of having an SRO is not about a police presence. It is more about who that person is and the interpersonal skills they possess. Chad has done more behind the scenes with our families, students, and staff than anyone would ever know. Similar to many who protect and serve, he does not want the praise. We are lucky, in fact, to actually get him to come tonight. Because he is an unsung hero in many ways, I would like to share a few reasons why Chad is such a special person. First is an SRO. Through my time at BCHS, I've watched and worked with Chad to keep our building safe, assist students and families in need, assist colleagues, and provide guidance on how to work through and plan events. He is always professional and respectful of the school and our mission. He takes time to understand situations and issues students are dealing with and is always level-headed. Chad is much, as much of an educator as he is a detective. I know he would not believe this, but he would make an amazing teacher. Second, as a friend and colleague, when I first started at BCHS as administrative dean, I was under the impression I would walk into an impressive office with a secretary ready to assist me with all my important responsibilities. It did not exactly turn out that way. I found out my office was going to be an old classroom that I would share with two other individuals, Anthony Malizia, the other dean, and Chad. After maintenance helped us out by putting up a couple of makeshift walls, we quickly referred to our office as the dorm room. Looking back, I would not have changed this experience one bit. I soon realized Chad was not only an amazing SRO, but even better friend. We could discuss, or should I say, at times disagree on many, on a number of issues, such as politics or sports. But at the end of the day, there was always a mutual respect. You knew he had your back and I had his. Finally, as a community member. As the saying goes, Chad outkicked his coverage, Mary and Katie. They live in town with their three beautiful children, Chad, Chase, and Chloe. Chad is a family-first guy. He recently completed his first year as a T-ball coach and is always looking for ways to make our community a better place for everyone. Chad's heart is always in the right place. Chad, I would like you to know, I am grateful, the Bethlehem Police Department is grateful, our school district is grateful, and our community is grateful for your past and continued service. Thank you, Chad.
Okay.
I just want to say something really quick. I don't have that kind of speech. I'm not kind of prepared. But I just want to personally thank Jody, Judy, Dave, Kathy. You guys are truly unbelievable. I'm honored to work in this building and honored to be in this school. There's, I don't know a lot of the board members. I know some of you are new. But I've been in this school since, like I said, 13, 14 years, and it's been an honor. And I also want to thank my police department for giving me the opportunity for being here and taking the position. And I also like to thank my wife for putting up with all the calls late at night and the call-outs during the night, but it seems like my new position, there's, it's kind of, it's more. So, I don't know if that's a benefit, but I truly am going to miss you guys. You guys are truly, I'm honored. I really am to live in this district. And when I first became an SRO, you know, I spoke with, I still do, I speak with a lot of the SROs, and their relationship with their school district is nothing like ours. And it's, it's amazing what we have. It's always, we, the purpose of us is always to educate kids. And the new SRO that's coming in is Detective Beck, and I've worked with Kenny for many years, and I try to tell him that it's not about making arrests, it's not about, you know, probation, it's not about that. It's about teaching the kids and making sure they understand that, you know, what they did is wrong, and they learn from it, and they move on in their life. Okay? So, thank you for everything. All right? Thanks.
Time for ice cream.
One other thing, I wanted to just announce, I sent something out today that Bethlehem was selected as the number-one school district by the Albany Business Review. That's four out of the last five years. Our high school was ranked number one in two years, this is the second year in a row. And I'd just like to thank the students and staff for another great year. Thank you to all of our parents who volunteer much of their time. Really, this is the reason why we consistently are at the top of the rankings, and without that community support of staff, students, parents, teachers, we would not be where we are. So, I just want to say thank you, and it's been a great year. And with that, I also have to say thank you once again to Charmaine and Lynn as superintendent and by years prior, working with you, it's been just tremendous. And we'll miss you on the board, but I hope you enjoy your free time, that you will, your newfound free time. So, thank you for all of your years of service and support for the district.
Thank you.
And that's my report.
All right. Board of Education report.
Last night, I attended the Lab School banquet. It was one of the best I've been to. Dave Lindrum did a really good job. It was scheduled for 5:30 to, I think, 11:30. We ended up around 9:00.
Wow. It was a record. It was a record.
It was a record.
It was great.
But one of the things that Dave did was he brought back what Steve Smith did, which was, it was the Lab School Coordinator who spoke to the seniors. And that was always very meaningful for the seniors, and through the changes, that sort of went away. But he brought it back, and the kids were really responsive to it. They really appreciated it, and it was just, it was a lovely evening. It was just really well-done. And I want to make one special mention, and that is that the, what the Lab School has is their big award, is the School Within Us Award. And that was given to Mackenzie Albrecht, and that's decided by the teacher's coordinator. And they're basically looking for the student who has been there and who not only gets Lab School, but is, is the one that is always helpful. They described her, a couple of words that the students described her as was "mom." And I know the value of that award, is also a scholarship that comes with it. My daughter won it two years ago. And it's one of those things that stays with you. And this is a very deserving young lady, and I'm glad she got it.
I just wanted to bring up a newspaper article I read this week about White Plains School District. They recently just acquired five all-electric buses. They were, it was in some sort of partnership with some company. I'm not sure exactly how it worked. But I was hoping that'd be something we could research, just, just to see how they did it and what the possibilities would be and what kind of financial benefits they would see, and also the financial costs. So, I don't know who, who would be doing that, whether we could contact Cindy in Transportation just to see if she could reach out to White Plains. Oh, you're on it. Okay.
I saw Judy writing. Sounds too good that Judy wouldn't already be on it.
As the next most senior board member, I just want to thank both Lynn and Charmaine on behalf of the board for all their contributions. I know I've learned a whole lot from them, as I'm sure we all have. And you both have made sizable marks on this district, so even though you won't physically be present here, your legacy will live on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I do, but I was waiting for them. Either way. No, go ahead. I went to the Spectrum concert, and I hope to go there again as a, my kid's graduating, so I'll be just a community member. But it was fabulous, and I want to appreciate the parents, the musicians, and the faculty who put that together. It was always, as always, a spectacular performance. The board and staff also hosted a gathering for Lynn in our honor, for Lynn and myself, and I just want to appreciate that, people putting that together. But I also want to also note that I didn't spend as much time with my newer colleagues as I perhaps should have. And the reason being was I spent a lot of time with people who I spent five, six, even eight years on the board reconnecting with. And so, my wish for all of you is that you will have colleagues who you will spend three, four, five, six, eight, however many years with, developing relationships and appreciation. So, that was, that was lovely, but thank you for that. And if I might, I'd like to just end with some advice for the newest members. It moves fast when you're up here on the side of the table. So, at the next meeting, it looks different. I think the microphones are there, the cameras there. Don't get caught up so much with the nays and yays and firsts and seconds, but I think focus on the questions and perspective that you bring here. I know there was an article on Spotlight, and I focused a lot on asking the questions. Because after you're sworn in, your vote and your perspective counts equally to anyone who's been here regardless of the number of years they've served. So, you are an equal part of the board, and just remember that. If you don't have the information you need to, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the next agenda, correct? You just...
A lot.
A lot. And it's like approving this and reappointing that. If you don't know what it is, feel free to ask. You elect officers. If you don't know why, for example, Charmaine's running, I don't know if we'll be here, but me as an example, ask Charmaine. What do you bring to the table? Why do you want it? Because that's an important part of the process. So, I just encourage you to ask questions and not to be distracted. I'm going to encourage you to be patient, because it took me years to learn this role, and I'm still learning, but to be impatient and to grab at every opportunity you have to learn more about the district and the role of the board. And I'm going to end with a story. So, I thought about running for office here three times before I was actually elected to be a vice president here. And at the time that I was considering a run, I spoke to a board member who was more senior to me, and she said something to me, and she said, "Yeah, I think it's, the time is right. You've kind of made some significant progress." And my initial reaction was, I was appalled, because I had been on the board for five years. And I said, "What is she saying? I finally have made, you know..." When I thought about it, she was absolutely right, that it took me years to know enough about this district. It took me years to understand the dynamics of the board. It wasn't you. So, it was, I'm letting you off the hook. But it took me years. So, to, to think that in a year or two years, I was in my third term before I was, I think, elected to be an officer, and I'm still learning. So, I said, "The only person qualified to say she knows it all is that woman sitting right there." So, to always think that, I think part of it is always learning and always being open. And the only way you're going to learn is by asking those questions. I will end with an appreciation to all of my fellow board members, past and present, and one of them is sitting right there. I had the honor and pleasure to serve with Matt as an officer, and it was a fabulous experience. And the faculty and staff and community members and kids who supported me in this process over the years, I owe you an incredible debt. So, thank you very much.
Well, I concur with most of what you say. I won't repeat what you said. I'm just bringing up a couple of other things. I was thinking about it. I've spent nearly half my life on the board, and, you know, when I thought about it, I said, "Oh, my God. I'm not sure, even with your family, you don't spend that much time." You know, kids grow up, they go off to college, they, you know, go off, get married, whatever. And, you know, that's a long time. So, in a sense, I feel like I'm leaving home in some respects, in some respects. Just a few things I want to say. When I was president a couple of years ago of NISBA, the State Association, my theme was "Be the Change for Kids." And the reason I chose that is that I just feel that we need to be the change agents, we need to push the change to maybe bring education into the 21st century. Part of education today is still based on an agrarian economy, and considering how few farms there are, it doesn't really make sense. But, I mean, that's the way education seems to be here. And, but I think we need to be conscious, you all need to be conscious, of what you can do to maybe try and change things. And obviously, you can't change individually. You need to bring ownership by all constituents groups into any changes that you make. But I just think that's important, and also that you need to be conscious of the change. Like Mahama Gandhi said, you know, "Be the change that you want to see in the world." I mean, you, it's important to play that role and to think about what change you can bring about. So, that was one thing I wanted to mention. In making decisions, always have kids, students, you know, in the back of your mind when you're making decisions. Sometimes you get caught up, especially in budget stuff, that you, you know, somehow, "Oh, we have students." And they're our ultimate consumers of why we're here. They're the ones who are, have the advantage of what decisions we make. So, just, you know, try and think of that sometimes, that, you know, we always want, think of those, especially those little kids that were right here in front of us, you know, that they are the ones that we're doing all this for. Want to recognize, too, that, you know, talk about change, you know, the demographics of the community are changing, and we need to address issues, many issues, whether they're mental health issues. I think I have to wear my glasses on here, giving my writing here. We need to serve the needs of all students, and again, to have that on our minds all the time is important. The other thing, too, and also, they have different backgrounds, different interests, and sometimes we have to, you know, we can't have children all going in the same direction. Sometimes some want to go here, some want to go here, you know, in terms of what they want to do with their lives. For example, not everybody is meant to go to a four-year school. Not everybody, you know, some people might be meant to go for a job, some in the military, who knows? But we need to encourage all students to do what's best for them. And I mentioned, also, they learn, children learn different ways, I think, from the way we learned when we were growing up. I think their brains are wired differently because of all the technology, and I think that makes a difference for faculty and staff in dealing and teaching their students. I mean, they're, they're not like we were when we were growing up. Not that I'm saying that's any, that's bad, but it's just different. So, again, we need to be conscious of the fact that they need to be conscious of that, too, and support, you know, professional development for staff. And then with the mental health issues, just, you know, social media, technology, while it's great, I think in some ways it's, sometimes has a negative effect on students, and we need to be conscious of what students are going through on a daily basis. I remember the first time that I heard that there were students in the elementary school that were depressed, I thought, "Oh, it's a fun time in life. How could they be depressed?" You know? It's a major issue among others, so we need, need to be cognizant of that. Lastly, I just want to thank, first of all, thank the community for voting me in for 10 terms for 30 years. Really support, I really appreciate all of that, and I want, and I appreciate all the boards that I've served with, including all of you and the future board. You know, all that you've done and the support that you have provided, the staff, the administration. I just, you know, it really has been great over 30 years. I mean, we've had some great people work here in Bethlehem, and we still do, and I just appreciate the support and appreciate the opportunity to have worked with all of you. And lastly, I want to thank my family. It was customary, and you two new board members can decide if you want to do this, but it was always customary for, for the new board members' families to attend the swearing-in ceremony at the first meeting in July. And, you know, it was always special, and, you know, we'd have pictures taken, and it was all, all great. So, in my leaving tonight, maybe this is my swearing-out ceremony or whatever. But anyhow, my daughter is here. She came on Father's Day, and unfortunately, I mean, I have to thank my whole family. My son's in Charlotte, North Carolina, and not, not so easily available to come up here, but I thank my family, and especially my husband, George, who can't be here tonight, for all their support, because it, it does take a little toll on families, and, you know, it can be difficult. So, I appreciate their support, and I thank my daughter for actually saying, "Can I come to your final board meeting?" Obviously, she's outgrown pig and whatever, so...
Thank goodness.
Yeah, stand up so everybody knows who you are. I guess I forgot. Thank you, Kim.
Thanks for sharing your mother.
And thank you again to all of you, and I wish both Willow and Chris best of luck in serving on the board, and I'm sure you'll do a great job. And if anybody does need to get ahold of me, you can.
We know. We have your number.
Okay. Am I good? I don't want to interrupt.
No, no. No, I'm okay.
Okay. Well, welcome, Will and Chris. We look forward to having you come in two weeks and taking your oath, so that's great. I went to the Friends Through Music concert at Hammagill last week, and it was a great concert with Albany City School District and Bethlehem. It was the third-grade class. It was Courtney Richmond's. She coordinated this with the other music teacher from Philip J. Schuyler Achievement Academy. And it was really great. They were pen pals, and then they worked on songs together, and then they collaborated, and then at the end... And then at the end, they did, they sang a song together. And it was the first, I know Charmaine, you're always championing diversity and doing those type of building activities within the community. And it was just really nice to see, and I hope that we can deliver that more across the district and find other opportunities where we can incorporate inner-city schools and show that the similarities between the two of us. And it was just, it was a great program, and it was very moving. The other thing was Jonathan went to the Lab School banquet last night, and I did as well. And I always love going to that event. It just reminds me of why Lab School is such a special place within our district. And the teachers were all sitting together at a table. I booted Jonathan. I sat there with my husband. And it was really nice to see the camaraderie between the teachers and the program and the humor that was going on, and the students, and what a family community it is. And Dave Lindrum did a tremendous job at the banquet last night, along with the other teachers. It was just a really wonderful event, humorous, funny, and very enjoyable. So it was just, it was just great. I can't say enough about it. And then lastly, Lynn and Charmaine, thank you again for thirty-nine years combined. You two were the first two people who kind of came up to me, welcomed me, introduced me, showed me the ropes before, when I was running, and after. And you're very strong women who represent our community extremely well. And we will miss you. And thank you. And it was our pleasure, everyone, sitting here, to have a retirement dinner for the both of you, because it was well-deserved, and I'm glad you both enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Did we get to say something else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Christine.
At this time, we'd like to recognize any visitors that are here on an agenda item. Item number seven, Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following Finance Action Items, 1 through 11.
Submove.
Any discussion?
Just thank, thank, you know, thank you to so many of the groups, Environmental Club, Cross boosters, et cetera. You know, further contributions, very generous.
Definitely thank you to all the, a lot of booster donations and club donations. We wouldn't be able to offer a lot of the things that we do without you.
Mrs. Keel, could you explain why once a booster club or organization makes a donation, it has to be on the board agenda?
Because by law, the board is responsible for accepting all donations that come into the district. So it appears there so we can have official action from you to accept those gifts. And then if it's something that involves spending money, we also need you to approve the budget modification that authorizes us to spend the money that was donated.
And some of the money comes in, basically it still gets funneled through the, to the organization, but the board has to accept the donation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number eight, Professional Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items, 1 through 16.
Submove.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Support Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items, 1 through 7.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Item number 10, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Action Items, 1 through 4.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion?
Wait, we're on 10, right?
Yeah.
Just thank you for considering the revisions to the code that I offered. And also just for the new members, my first meeting, I used to write codes of conduct for colleges and universities. So my first meeting, it was up for second read. And I actually, I don't know if you remember this, Lynn. I don't think you were on the board yet, but I started going through it line by line. And I could tell the other board members were kind of looking at me. And no one could interrupt me. But the whole idea that by the time policies are up for second reads, it's not necessarily a formality, there can still be changes. But, you know, when you get on the board, the first read is the, unless you're on the policy committee and actually developing the policies, is when you really take a good crack at it. And then, so when you approve the code of conduct next meeting, it's really there as a... Seriously, no one interrupted me, but I was going, I thought, "Oh, you should read the code and go through it." But anyway, that was... Actually, there's a public hearing too, next month at the first meeting, public hearing on the code of conduct. Which is a multiple major document. But again, thank you for considering the revisions I suggested, as not a member of the policy committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Can I say something else?
Yeah.
Congratulations to Ms. Monroe for your recognition by the board. I realize your contract was there and for your, the board recognizing your service to the district and the direction that your leadership has taken it.
Thank you.
Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to recognize any visitors that are here on a non-agenda item. Come on up, state your name in the microphone.
I'm Matt Downey, former board member, and was actually an agenda item, I guess, because we talked about Charmaine and Lynn tonight. But I personally wanted to thank you as a community member, as a fellow board member, Charmaine, for your nine years of service and how apropos you're discussing policy when. I think that was one of your strong points that you brought to the board and the perspective that I greatly appreciated. And I appreciated your service in working with you as an officer. Lynn, thirty years, you've given your life to Bethlehem, not just to the board, but to Bethlehem. And I think it was remarkable last week when we all got together to see that former superintendents traveled thousands of miles to honor and recognize you. That says a lot about you, your character, and you're going to be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Future meetings and events. Tomorrow, we have the eighth-grade Moving Up Ceremony at the high school gym B at 8:45. Then we have the high school graduation Friday, June 22 at the Times Union Center at 6:30.
You should just check your email, because directions, if you didn't see it, the high school put out directions for board members for parking and things. So I just want to mention that. If you haven't checked your email, it came out today.
I did notice that that email did not tell us what time to get there.
So 5:30.
Be there in the roving room at 5:30.
Monday, July 2 is our organizational meeting. And Wednesday, August 8 is our next Board of Education meeting, well, organizational meeting as a...
Can I say something, Christine? I will be at the July 2 meeting. It's not that I can't get away from the place. But my daughter's an athlete, and they're going to be recognizing athletes. And they had a particularly successful season. So, you know, I didn't anticipate coming back and watching meetings so quickly, but that's why I will be, I believe, in the audience.
Are you coming too, Lynn?
No.
She'll be at the one after.
Setting the tax rate, no.
At this time, we have no need to go back into executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.